Good afternoon and welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing before the commission today, please introduce yourself and your clients and spell your names. And if you're appearing before the commission to testify on any matter on today's agenda, come forward, be sworn in, and spell your name for our commission's report. That being said, commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Yes Chair, motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes on the 46th meeting as previously circulated. Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes over 46 minutes meeting is approved, are approved. Going into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-15155 from Imperial Restaurant. Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon, this is Chairman, members of the commission. To my right is Mr. Fabrizio Favale. He is the applicant and the president. He is represented by Wayne Luke. We have no changes to the [inaudible].
Thank you very much. Ms. Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number 19-15155, second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-15155 is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number two, application number 19-15236 from Jungle Bar LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman O'Donnell.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lee.
Members of the Honolulu Liquor Commission, I'm James H. Q. Lee, here to represent Jungle Bar. With me today is Mr. Justin Alexander, managing member of Jungle Bar LLC.
Do you have any special request?
Well, we did submit a device [inaudible].
Okay, fine, so you're ready to proceed?
Yes, I'm ready.
Very good, okay. Ms. Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. By way of past history on this application, application was originally set for public hearing for the May 2nd meeting, which matter was continued to the May 9th, May 16th, and May 30th meeting while applicant attempted to resolve a non-compliance issue with pertaining to the 2157(c)(3) mail-out. Subsequently, the public hearing was canceled on June 6th and with the applicant starting over with publication in the paper and mail-out. This application has received 35 written protests, one letter in support. The 35 protests represent less than 1% or equal to 1% of the ownerlesses or registered voters within 500 feet of the proposed premises. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you very much. So I see we have some testifiers. Could I have Mr. Robert Beer? Please come forward, sir.
Sir, I'm gonna swear you in and also advise you that I'm running a three-minute timer.
Okay.
Do you swear that the testimony you give today here will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My wife's not able to make it today, but she did send in a letter. And hers was dealing with ADA requirements concerning new construction and like the bathroom and having a rampway to that. That's real near and dear to her heart. Her father was a polio victim on crutches for his whole life. My part, of course, I'm afraid the course of events of the application for this liquor license has kind of dampened the public's response. We have still gotten a lot of, or you've received a lot of dissension letters, and I just heard one in favor. But a lot of disinformation has spread with people that I've talked to. Many people believe the liquor license had already failed and given up. A lot of people, you know, just kind of gave up because of so many delays. But, you know, remember, you know, we did have a lot of families here, a lot of people who, you know, live in the area that, you know, we get to hear, you know, I mean, it's an open-air bar. You know, there was one letter of support, which I haven't seen. I'm not sure who it comes from. But, you know, we've heard a lot of, you know, just moving things along, kind of say anything and, you know, kind of ruled over, you know, community peacefulness. But this place is right underneath Ma Lanai. And so more and more people, more and more speaking. And of course, we do have food trucks right across the street there. As far as I know, they don't sell any liquor, but of course, once this place gets a food for liquor, I'm sure that they'll have to go ahead and perhaps apply for liquor license also in order to compete. How many of those food trucks are gonna, you know, request? And it's just gonna leave, you know, there's plenty of places to drink down in Waikiki. I'm just afraid we don't need, you know, it just seems to be problematic and outdoor. And then I did ask this week for a layout of the property, but I've, they gave me the same old one, so I don't know, is there a new one besides the one that had been on file before? You hadn't had a chance to look at it? Okay. Okay, so yeah, this is new. So when was this?
This was submitted on Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna let you have my copy of the supplemental licensing report, and you may keep this copy.
Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, 'cause a lot of it is, it's a tight food truck, food lot, and I know there's gonna be issues with, I feel, you know, people-
It is time.
Passing out liquor to others, seeing that, and people walking off property with liquor. Because I know right now, we have a lot of people that, you know, stray. But it's Waikiki.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Bar?
Yes, Mr. Bear, the location of the applicant, where he has the food trucks, right?
Yes.
What, and I'm not clear, I took a quick look at your submission just that we were seeing just now and distinct to your testimony. What specifically is about liquor service would change the dynamics in your opinion?
Of course, he's proposing a lot, to have a lot more people. You know, I mean, you know, two years ago, it was a parking lot, and so-
If you can stick to my question-
Yeah, yeah.
What's the difference between, in your mind, the existing food truck service and then if you add alcohol or liquor to that current use of the property?
Of course, I've, you know, submitted some other pictures, but right now, we have a lot of families, children, different things, with more people. And I fear as people drink, people tend to get louder, party atmosphere. We have had liquor across the street over there some, and I don't think, it wasn't sold, it was more of one of the food trucks was closed, and it was party atmosphere, and it was much louder than the normal.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody else have any other question?
Mr. Chair, if I could put one additional item on the record that I neglected to earlier in speaking to the cancellation of the public hearing on June 6th. At that same hearing, the applicant requested and the commission approved the downgrade of the application from restaurant general category two, which is an entertainment category, to a restaurant general category one standard bar. I neglected to just take that earlier.
That is correct, that is correct, I recall that.
I have a question, Mr. Bear.
My Chairman.
Is there a lot of foot traffic on this corner?
At times, yeah, yeah, there is quite a bit.
That it can get to be a busy intersection with pedestrians and tourists walking around?
Yeah, yeah. And it is fearful too, and of course, I just, like I said, I just had the chance to look at this. But like, there's the fence, you know, there's even mopeds that drive down the sidewalk in addition to bicycles and everything, to strollers, to shopping carts, and so it is, you know, at times, it really is crowded.
Thank you.
Because that's one of the things, and I don't know if they're, of course, yeah, like I said, I just, just now getting the, now this still shows the Bill and Mike's grill?
No, the grill is no longer on. Grill is no longer on.
Oh, here's the new, okay, proposed site, okay, sorry, sorry. Okay, yeah, yeah. But like, your walkways down here, were those secured into the ground?
Okay, so Mr. Bar, we're not gonna allow you to get into a conversation with the applicant. Right, do you have anything else for them?
No.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Any other questions?
Thank you for coming. Right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Lee, would you address the community's concerns?
Yes, Mr. Alexander is very cognizant, and he respects his neighbors, so we did downgrade the restaurant license from one allowing music to one which has no music and entertainment. The, you know, we heard questions regarding security and the serving, the possible serving of liquor to minors and controls that were needed. And Mr. Alexander has come up with a manual, instruction manual. All liquor customers who've been verified as to age will have wristbands, and there will be patrolling, a patrol on the restaurant premises or the property premises to make sure that only those who are eligible for drinking are served liquor or are drinking. As far as any questions on ADA, these plans are ADA compliant. I think Mr. Bear's previous plan, layout showed a graph, but we have revised it. Now it's a lift, and so there'll be accessibility to the bathrooms. And so, yeah, Mr. Alexander is very cognizant, and here, the neighbors, and he'll do everything to control noise from the premises. This is still only a food truck, it's not a whole open restaurant. And, you know, numbers of customers are limited.
Let me just ask this question, Mr. Lee. So is, and Mr. Alexander, so are you stating for the record that the entrance to your property and the exit to your property is ADA certified or in compliance, regulated?
Yes, and I-
There's no, you don't go from the sidewalk onto gravel path?
No, you go onto astroturf.
Astroturf, okay.
But it is compliant, and I am required to apply for a new Waikiki special district permit, so I am going through that process because they are requiring it. And of course, the change to the bathroom and the ramp requires permits, so I am in a new Waikiki special district permit process.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I have a question. Could you please, we have different floor plans, I think for the last time that things have changed. Could you kind of go over with us what has changed since the original one? We see that it may have been taken down to two food trucks versus three, and then-
Yes, there was a previous food truck, Mike's Steak Plate. They are no longer there. It's been a little bit of a process to get them out, but we have downgraded, so we have more space, and we are going to be, it's more advantageous for us just to have those two food trucks.
So in our report, it says the proposed pizza bar would be the point of sale for alcohol, is that the new proposed bar?
That is the new proposed, yes, yes.
So we're down to three vendors, Hula Dog, Food Bar, and an ice cream-
And an ice cream kiosk, yes.
Okay.
And we still plan to have, you know, Last Call at 8:30, Close at 9:00. You know, we, we don't want to be a bar, we don't, I just want to be able to sell alcohol with food.
Mr. Alexander, the picture provided by Mr. Bear shows that the corner area is not blocky, there's no fence, there's no nothing. Is that going to continue to be the case? Is that, you're proposing to just have an open area and not control the egress?
We were, that corner was going, is open for the access, and we were not going to fence that off.
And then on that, in that same area, on your floor plan, you call it a wood fence, but it looks like planters to me.
They're, they're planters. And we're, we're going to have the wrought iron fence matching the existing spearhead fence on the other side, but we want to put planters in front of that.
So there is going to be a fence installed right there as well, or not?
On the backside, yes, behind the planters is the exact same wrought iron fence with the planters in front. And we've got to propose for the, which plant, what we're gonna plant, so we're gonna try to put hiviscus in.
Okay, but except for this large open area, looks to me about at least 10 feet across, where there's going to be no fence, no gate, nothing?
That will, yeah, that will be the access.
So what is going to stop people that are drinking from just walking off the property with the alcohol?
Well, we are going to, managers, the employees, they're, we, they will be, that is part of their responsibility.
Part of their responsibility? Are you gonna have dedicated people ensuring that no alcohol leaves your premises?
Well, that is a responsibility of the employees. Everyone has to have a wristband before they can get alcohol, and the manager and the employees, because they will be patrolling out there, they will be picking up the tables, so that's part of, that is their responsibility.
What's the capacity for this area?
Each picnic table comfortably holds four people, so if everything was maxed out, maybe 40 people.
But that's not including people that can stand in the area. See, when we have, when we have brick and mortar restaurants and bars, they are required to go through the fire safety inspection, and the fire department provides the max capacity for that, for that premises. So what is gonna be, what, what will happen if the place is crowded, people stand, you know, these are food trucks, this is Hula Dog, you can stand up and eat a hot dog.
Right.
So what's gonna prevent, how are you gonna handle if it gets very, very busy, and your employees are focused on other things, and you have people coming in, going out with alcohol? But I would like to hear a security plan.
Well, we, we could, we could continue the fence, and we could narrow that entrance point, and, you know, already the employees will be monitoring and patrolling. I, we've never had that much capacity at this site.
Also haven't been serving liquor at this site.
That is true. So we could, we could bring, we could bring the fence around more. I just don't want the entrance and exit too tight. I don't want a small gap there for people to come in and come out, so-
Why not?
Because I, I feel that it's safer to have a wider entry point.
Safer for who?
For everyone, the customers. I mean, if you're coming in in a wheelchair, and, or families are coming in. But I can narrow that, we can narrow it down, but I, I don't want it to-
I'm not making any suggestions for you, I'm asking how you are going to control it, because right now, it looks pretty loose to me.
We're gonna, we're gonna control it, the employees are gonna control that, and we're, they're gonna be making sure, just like every bar or restaurant, that people are not leaving the premises with alcohol. And one, if I can, if I, yeah, Mr. Alexander will be on second. He'll be actively managing operations. And I know that's a major liability, just like any restaurant or bar, if someone takes alcohol off the premise, do we take that very seriously? This is, it's a, it's a major asset, and, you know, I'll do everything to protect it with full compliance.
Another, just a question of clarification. You mentioned to our chair that you're going through the permit, building permit process, or everything?
Yeah, I, there'll be a Waikiki special district permit, because it's in the special district, and then there'll be a building permit process, because the stairs and the lift and the modifications to the interior all require permits.
Okay, how long are you expecting that process?
Well, it's, I don't know, the DPP is hard to gauge on how backed up they are with special-
Did you just start that process?
We have started that process.
You just started it recently?
Yes, yes. And a lot of it's gonna depend also on, you know, what we're being allowed to, to make these modifications, and, you know, if we're not granted the liquor license, and probably want to put it in the public restroom. But I've already submitted those plans and anticipated that it'll go through.
Part of the permit process that controls life safety, so I mean, we're concerned about, what you show may not be what we end up approving. I mean, I mean, say we go ahead and approve this, but it might change because of the permanent Waikiki special district process, so that's what I'm kinda hoping.
Yeah, if there's a, I'm sure if you modified the plan, I would have to go just back into DPP and amend my-
Well, we're not gonna modify the plan at all. You're going through the permit process, which drives life safety and whatever Waikiki special district controls, so they may make you revise a bunch of stuff. So what I'm saying is that by the time that process finishes, it may look different than what we're looking at right now.
And Mr. Commissioner, if there are any revisions required by them, I will come back in at this moment. But- And I do want to say also that I had a previous Waikiki special district permit for the trailers, but because of the change in the configuration, I have to reapply.
Correct.
So, but I did have one before.
I have a question.
Mr. Alexander, how many employees does Jungle Bar have?
Jungle Bar will have between two to three.
And how many on duty during the service of alcohol, the food, or the grant application?
There are at least a minimum of two.
Two?
Yeah.
Their duties would include serving alcohol, selling alcohol?
Yes, yeah.
And how much time would you dedicate, or are those employees required to patrol the property as you folks have described?
Yeah, absolutely.
What percentage of their day, let's say you have, you said minimum of two, would you expect them to spend more than 50% of their time patrolling the property?
I expect them to spend more than 50%, one of them 50% of their time outside the food truck. There's a lot of activities outside the food truck, that cleaning tables, moving items, and so they're, they're outside of the truck quite a bit.
And the duties outside the truck include cleaning up tables, serving food?
Yes, yeah.
And are your employees wearing uniforms that would indicate to the customers or the public that they have the authority to enforce the rules?
Yeah, we're gonna, they're gonna wear shirts that they wear, matching shirts.
Chair Gomabon?
Thank you. So I remember this application with tons of protests, and I know that we had discussed before your outreach with the neighbors and the community that you, that you have your business in. So since then, what outreach have you done with the public, or how, what, have you held any meetings? Have you continued to go door to door? What's happened?
I've had some local dialogue with some of the neighbors, and you're here with the protesters, I've spoken to all of them when they're here. But we, and I, it's mostly just been personal dialogue while they're on the property.
And what type of response have you received? Have you got a good understanding, they, they're aware now, or what do you-
Yeah, I, I would say that the majority of the people are, they're okay with it. They're, but I understand other residents too that live close, right? I, I just try to tell people that we're not a bar, and we're not, we're doing Last Call at 8:30. We really want to sell food and be able to sell some alcohol with it, and that's just, and that's our aim. When I tell people I'm not, we're not a nightclub, we're not a bar, we're not looking for that. It usually alleviates most concerns. And to know that we're closing, we have Last Call at 8:30.
Motion to convene to executive session, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Aye, I vote aye. We are now in executive session. We are now back on the official record. With that being said, commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes Chair, type of action. My motion is to deny application number 19-15236, second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor of denying application number 19-15236? Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number 19-12, 15236 is denied. Thank you, Mr. Lee, Mr. Alexander. Let's move on to agenda item number three, application number 19-16298 from Yuri Maru Holdings, Inc. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Yuri Maru Holdings, Inc. To my right is Mr. Tomokazu Kiro, the manager. We have no changes to this report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Okay, motion to approve application number 19-16298, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number 19-16298 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Calling agenda item number four, application number 19-16535 from Smile Hills, Inc. Mr. Gota again.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Smile Hills, Inc. To my right is Natsumi Kitami, manager. We have no changes to this report also.
Thank you. Ms. Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Mr. Gota, would you like to address the one protest that we received?
Do you know when that one was received?
June 6th. I think it's the same one that you discussed at the [inaudible].
I believe they're referring to a different location. We don't have any outdoor area. This is the Vegan Hills Restaurant on Waikiki, so there's no, there's no outdoor area in the front. I believe he might have, they've been, they have been referring to my other client, The Ripple of Smiles, with that outdoor seating area, given the name similarity. So, yeah, there's no outdoor seating area at this location.
Did you attempt to reach out to the person who submitted the protest?
By understanding under the rules, we should not contact protesters, but we're here to answer questions if they contacted you.
Okay, understood, no?
Yeah, definitely.
Understood, thank you. Very good, thank you. Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six five three five. Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one six five three five is approved. Moving to the license applications, agenda item number five, applications number one nine dash one six four zero eight dash one through one nine dash one six four zero eight dash twenty.
Yes, Chair, um, due to a conflict, um, I'm gonna have to review myself from agenda items five and agenda item number nine.
Item nine, very nice, thank you. Mister Nikova.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. It's okay, I was gonna talk really slowly.
How about softly? Can you make the music a little more softly?
I will do what I can.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair and Commissioners, Devin Nikova representing Gen Korean. Uh, to my right is Conan Pike Rosa, P A I K dash R O S A, is the GM for Gen Korean. Uh, we have no changes or, uh, comments to make for the investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four zero eight dash one through one nine dash one six four zero eight dash two zero. Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, applications number one nine dash one six four zero eight dash one through one nine dash one six four zero eight dash twenty inclusive are approved.
Oh, no, it is not.
They have number nine also.
They have number nine, and Commissioner Lee is not here, so let's go to number nine. Calling agenda item number one nine dash one six zero four one, from, uh, Gen Pro Ridge LLC.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Commissioners, once again, Devin Nikova representing, uh, Gen Pro Ridge LLC. To my right, uh, Mister Conan Pike Rosa, he is the GM for Gen Pro Ridge. Again, we have no changes or corrections to the, uh, report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six zero four one. Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six zero four one is approved. Thank you very much. Can I have Commissioner Lee back, please? And we're going to agenda item number six.
Yes, sir.
If that's correct, vice chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You know, when you start shuffling these things around, I get confused. I can't follow the program unless it's right here in front of me. Very good. Calling agenda item number six, application number two zero dash two zero one two seven from Hawaii Korean Chamber of Commerce. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Russell Luke, I am the authorized agent and the Korean Festival promoter for the Hori Korean Chamber of Commerce.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? This is for the Seventeenth Annual Korean Festival, which will have a lot of good entertainment and everything.
Best food.
Best food and everything.
Thank you.
Just for your information, how do you like my haircut? My barber, my barber is a part of, a member of the church that will be participating, and she's in Kaneoie, and, and, her name is Kay.
Kay Chun.
But that, that will have no decision on my, on my decision, uh, no influence on my decision making. Very good.
So, Mister Luke?
Yes.
This is a big event, um, so I have a couple of questions. You indicated that the people that will be dispensing the liquor is Kukui Food Employees?
That is correct.
And what, they have liquor experience?
Yes, yes.
They took, okay, so they're, um, they operate out of a bar, or they have a bar, or?
No, they're, they're a distributor, liquor distributors, uh, yeah, so they have a liquor license and distributors.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, who will be ID, IDing for your beer garden?
Besides the, uh, off-duty police officer from HPD that's on site, uh, we're having, uh, I think it's, it's called, uh, Prior Vision LLC, yeah.
And they're the identify, the ID?
They're the identifiers, so there'll be the crew that will be, um, having to inspect as well as guard the, uh, secured entrances and then what internally to monitor.
Okay. And, um, I know that your serving Shojou, so, I'm, I love the drink, but how are you planning to serve? Like, what is your size, your size of serving?
The drinks are at five dollars a drink, and, uh, they'll be in three different, uh, sizes, we're also selling Korean beer, so they'll have a two ounce cup, uh, five ounce, uh, mixed drink in case they want with, uh, cranberry or juice, and then eight ounces for the beer.
So the Shojou, they'll have choices on the three sizes then?
Uh, no, no, it's just a, plain, straight Shojou would be just a two ounce.
Two ounce, okay, yeah, very good.
Thank you.
And this will be in a separate beer garden tent, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
That is correct.
We have a separate, uh, cordoned off and secured area, uh, while the premise, overall premise will be used for, uh, cultural food as well as entertainment.
Very good. Commissioner, Commissioner?
Mister Luke, do you have nine HPD special duty on the premises?
Uh, we have road closers, so we'll have two there, and then we'll have, uh, four officers, uh, two on each end, uh, patrolling, uh, and that's in addition to the, uh, four additional, uh, for the beer garden, special, especially for the beer garden.
Four additional HPD?
Right, right.
And then you have, how many, uh, security officers, four?
Four, so, yeah, eight total, uh-huh, and then when the, the, uh, so-called, um, international, um, entertainment comes in, we'll have additional two. So we have two other groups coming in, uh, they'll be performing at seven, um, the groups are Ladies Code and, uh, ESNA, so these are two additional groups that have flown in from Korea.
Okay, and your estimate of the people who are gonna be in the beer garden is still at five hundred?
Yeah, I, I think it's a little on the high side, I, I don't think it'll be that much, but, yeah, I think most of the attendees are basically for the festival as a chairman and as a member.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm for the food. I have one additional question.
Yes.
So I, um, on your floor, um, you have it indicated that ID will be checked at the entrance only, but then on the top where your bar is, it says wristlets issued upon purchase. So, is?
The, the, the wristlets will just be to, um, to signify who bought, who purchased. There might be, uh, nobody, you, it's, uh, eighteen and over, I mean eighteen, I mean, you know, the age of a parent to get in, so nobody under the, the drinking age can get into the, the place, yeah. So we'll have that, but only those that buy will be monitored in terms of consumption.
Okay, so normally... Normally, they do the wristbands at the ID check to identify who is eligible to purchase beer, so I'm assuming in the beer garden, it should only be twenty-one and over, so I'm a little off by, I don't wanna purchase and then get a wristband, yeah, because your people roaming in there, you'll see people with them without wristbands, so the purpose is to distinguish who your drinkers are and who are in the beer garden.
Okay, um, and we'll, we'll make a amendment to do that, that at the, at the entrance, right? Once they are, um, verified that they're twenty-one and over, they will get a wristband at the time that they enter the beer garden.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
That'll work.
Yeah, that'll work.
There you go.
All right. Okay. All right. Okay, motion to approve application number two zero dash two zero one two seven.
Second?
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, application number two zero dash two zero one two seven is approved. Thank you, Mister Luke.
Thank you. Konsumida.
Let's move on. Uh, I know nothing about Korea.
Oh, you gotta know the food school.
Yeah, the food school. So, let's call agenda item number seven, application number two zero dash two zero one three zero dash one through two zero dash two zero one three zero dash fourteen inclusive, Mister Proventia.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairs, Commissioners, and Sirai. Gabriel Proventz on behalf of Sedex America LLC, seeking special licenses, no changes or additions to the investigative report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, is that the airport, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay, um, motion to approve applications number two zero dash two zero one three zero dash one to two zero dash two zero one three zero dash one, correct? Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number two zero dash two zero one three zero dash one through two zero dash two zero one three zero dash fourteen inclusive are approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number two zero dash two zero one three one dash one through two zero dash two zero one three one dash six from Hobo Enterprises. As the record reflect, as the record reflect, we're in Wisconsin, uh, at this time, I'm gonna withdraw the applications. Commissioners gonna have?
Motion to approve.
Approve the withdrawal.
Go ahead.
Motion to withdraw, application number two zero dash two zero one three one dash one two, two zero dash two zero one, uh, one three one dash six.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, applications number two zero dash two zero one three one dash one through two zero dash two zero one three one dash six, um, applications are approved to be, uh, withdrawn.
Thank you.
We gotta go to ten, if that's correct, vice chairman?
Yes, sir.
Application number one nine dash one six four four nine from Foodland Supermarket.
Uh, good afternoon, um, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the Commission. I am Andrew Kawano, Senior Vice, Senior, um, Director of Finance for Foodland Supermarket Limited, and to my left is Jason Lamb, District Manager, Foodland Supermarket Limited. We have no changes to our application.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four four nine. Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one six four four nine is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Calling agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six four five one from Foodland Supermarket Limited.
Yeah, um, yeah, um, good afternoon, Commission, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. I'm Andrew Kawano, uh, Senior Director of Finance, and to my left is Jason Lamb, District Manager of Foodland Supermarket Limited. We have no changes to our application.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four five one. Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six four five one is approved.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, if you're coming, uh, the, let's move on to agenda item number twelve, stock transfer application, application number one nine dash one five nine eight three from Mister Ogisan, Inc. Mister Keuchy?
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Keuchy for the applicant. Chair, you're gonna recuse the doubt, huh?
Thank you.
We have no changes or additions to the investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve stock transfer application, um, number one nine dash one five nine eight three. Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one five nine eight three is approved.
Mister Keuchy?
Mister Keuchy, do you have any other business?
I do.
Other than adjudications?
I do have one adjud, yeah, no, I don't.
You do.
I'll wait for the adjudication.
Who is Mister Ogisan? Is that a person or is it?
Mister Ogisan was, actually, well, he was named after Keiko's late husband.
Oh, okay.
And this probate took a while, 'cause he died in oh-two.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so.
Ogisan.
Yeah, to take it over.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah, she's been there a long time.
I was just wondering, who is this infamous Mr. Ogisan? I was like, waiting for him to come out of the kitchen, or what? I didn't, I don't know who that is.
Well, it's, uh, yeah, you don't wanna call Keiko his son, so.
What I liked about it, he would come over to you and ask you, "Good boy." Can we have, um, Commissioner, I'll be a show back, please? Okay, where we going now? Okay, so let's call agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six nine seven four from HIE Retail LLC.
Good afternoon, Gabriel Proventz on behalf of HIE Retail LLC, the licensee. Uh, I do have one clarification to the investigative report, it's not substantive. As background, the licensee will, plans to merge into another entity, and, uh, there's a note about that entity is currently Par Hawaii Inc., and it will be first converting into Par Hawaii LLC, and then the licensee will merge into Par Hawaii LLC. The investigative report's a little unclear about the timing of that, but end result is licensee will merge into an entity named Par Hawaii LLC.
Okay, thank you very much. Mister Sato, would you like to, would you like to, or are you comfortable with the representation by counselor?
Just correct. Thank you.
Very much, okay. Commissioners, can you include in your, uh, in your motion, uh, all of the, not, uh, not individually, but, uh, approved all of the, um, listed addresses?
Without all the locations, I suppose?
Yeah.
All locations?
Yeah. Without calling their names?
The D's.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to approve, um, request number one nine dash one six nine seven four for the following, um, stores, D, D zero four five six, D zero eight seven eight, D zero six one four, D zero six eight seven, D zero seven four five, D zero seven five two, D zero nine oh four, D zero nine one three, D zero nine two three, D zero nine three one, D zero nine seven seven, and D one one seven one.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six nine seven four is approved with, uh, for all retail license, uh, in commis, uh, stated by, uh, Vice Chair Gomabon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one six nine seven seven from Midpac Petroleum LLC.
Gabriel Proventz on behalf of Midpac Petroleum LLC, the licensee, and I have a similar clarification for this request for prior approval of merger. The investigative report, well, I guess I'll just summarize it as, the end result is the licensee, Midpac Petroleum LLC, will merge into an entity, Par Hawaii LLC.
Mister Sato, would you like to comment? No comment? Very good, thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six nine seven seven for the following licenses, D one oh eight seven and D one oh nine eight. Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one six nine seven seven is approved for, uh, license D one zero eight seven and D one zero nine eight.
Thank you.
Let's call agenda item number fifteen, request number one nine dash one seven zero two four from Lanikai Brewing Company LLC.
Hi Commissioners, Steve Humshild with Lanikai Brewing Company, last name is spelled H-A-U-M-S-C-H-I-L-D. I just caught one slight correction, and that would be on page two, under the redefined license premises. The last sentence says it'll be approximately eighty feet by a hundred and thirty, and it will be approximately, actually forty feet by a hundred and thirty, which matches the map, so it's slightly smaller than, uh, what was supposed to be.
Thank you. And this is for the craft brewers industry event?
Uh, there's two events, one will be an anniversary party of that location, and the second will be a, an industry event for the craft brewers, like an award ceremony for craft brewers. It's on two different days, two different events.
And you have some extra days you're requesting in case of, follow me?
Uh, yes, sir, so it's an outside area, so we just requested the next two days, just in case it's weather, we won't use them unless it's a weather event.
So, regardless of whether the most amount of days you'll be having events there is two, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and are you folks having any additional security personnel at this event?
Um, our staff will be involved in the security for the anniversary party, as well as the craft beer awards.
Okay.
Luckily with the craft beer awards, it's predominantly industry members that are aware of all regulations and.
Um, and is there gonna be any, like, sort of temporary barricades? Because I know this location, and it's very close to the road, and that road can get pretty busy, and also people tend to park across the street, 'cause that's where the parking on the street is.
Yep.
So, are you folks, have any plans to help people get across the street safely, make sure people are going into the street?
Um, yeah, so to address the first question about the barriers, um, as you look on the map, it's, a lot of it is outlined by existing buildings that are already there, our building, as well as a neighboring building. On the bottom part of the map, where it's closest to where it says Exhibit A, uh, that is kind of marsh, or exposed to the marshlands, so we'll have, um, temporary fencing there. Uh, towards the top, uh, on the map, closer to where it says Hamakua Drive, um, I believe that's where you're referring to, is the driveway area.
Yeah.
We'll also have fencing that goes there.
Okay.
Um, and then as it pertains to people walking across the road, they generally either park on our side of the road, or take the public crosswalk, that's on Hamakua and Hahani. Yep.
So, where are all of the patrons that will be attending your event be parked?
Um, Kailua is pretty difficult for parking in general, and some of the parking is the public.
Very familiar with that area.
Some of the parking is, um, in the public parking area, which is near Whole Foods.
Yeah.
Will they walk over from there?
Before we go, okay.
And, um, a lot of, at least our patrons now, are community members that tend to bike and walk from their various locations. So, we know, at least for the, um, for the first event, our, our general anniversary party is mostly Kailua patrons who bike and walk usually, and for the craft beer awards, a lot of them will be shuttling and Ubering, 'cause they'll be coming from breweries and town locations and stuff.
Thank you. Our, our can, concern is the safety of the people that will be attending your event.
Yep.
Because they will have to cross that crosswalk.
The Hahani crosswalk?
Yes.
Yes.
And a lot of them will not use the crosswalk, as you know.
Uh.
On the other side of the street, there is not a crosswalk.
The, uh.
So, they'll be coming from that area, they'll be coming from the downside area, and that street, as Vice Chairman stated, is a very heavily traveled for people coming off of the Poly, Poly Highway, and from people coming the other way. They wanna get into Enchanted Lakes, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so we're very concerned that, um, you're very diligent, uh, excuse me, diligent in providing a safe atmosphere for the pedestrians.
I agree.
Entering your, uh, space.
Well, and leaving, you know, if they're gonna be drinking and they're.
Yes.
But, you know, I, I know, I get lazy too, you know, if the crosswalk is fifty yards away, and I can just jet across the street, you know, so, um, and that's fine when it's only a couple people who aren't intoxicated, but when it's a lot of people who are intoxicated, you know, perhaps you folks can, um, kinda encourage people to use the crosswalk, or remind them, or, you know, something to help, uh, move the foot traffic onto the crosswalk instead of going across that four lane road.
Yeah, we can, we can remind them upon arrival and departure, both, 'cause we'll have monitored staff at the entrances and, which is also the exit, yeah, so we can remind them to cross legally.
Just my last question, just my last question, so, are you stating for the record that there will be no intoxicated participants at your event?
That there'll be no intoxicated?
Intoxicated?
We're gonna, we're gonna monitor everybody, and if they reach the levels that meet the.
That is a violation, correct?
I'm sorry?
That is a violation of our rules.
That would be a violation.
That would be over service.
That's correct, and we have no intention.
Be very mindful of that, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm actually, you have some questions, going back to, um, the Chairman's questions. How are you getting the word out to your prospective customers and, um, clients who are gonna attend the event, is it through social media, or brochures, or some other means?
Um, for the anniversary event, we, we really don't do very much advertising at all, so it's really just to celebrate the people that are there, and so we'll put it notices within our location, as well as on our social media. It's mostly, say ninety percent of our clientele is just local community members. For the craft beers event, it's mostly an industry event, so we have, um, various communications on how we communicate with each other, and if it is approved, we'll be using that methodology.
Okay, and I'd suggest, and I can't tell you what to do on this, but along the lines of, um, alerting the prospective visitors, customers, um, you might wanna add to your social media site, the location of the parking lot, because the public area you talked about is quite a distance, it's not intuitive to me to park there if I was to attend the event, and maybe to alert them that there is marked crosswalks with lights and so forth, so that they can use those facilities.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Chair, you do have someone who has signed up to testify?
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Is it, is it right in front of you? There we go.
Oh. Thank you very much.
It came in late.
I missed that, okay, is, uh, Mr. Roel Corvello here? Please come forward.
I'm going to swear you in and run a three minute timer. Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Roel Corvello, I own adjacent property next to Lanikai Brewery. My concern is simply this, really doesn't have the resources to do something of this scope. I mean, you have six businesses in that building, that are all gonna have to look for parking, uh, CrossFit, aerobics, uh, a Judo, uh, MMA, uh, a music store, where are all these people gonna park while this place is closed for two weeks? We already got a big problem, as you stated, on the street. In the earlier days, I had, and I still have, people pulling up and trying to park in one of my parking lots, because they have no parking. Now are you gonna do a thing and close a parking lot for two days? Where are all the people gonna park that, that go to that building, that work in that building? They go to the aerobics, go to the gym, go to the, the, the CrossFit place? You know, I had guys parking in one of my parking lots across the street, and I had to ask them not to park there, and then I had to go across, and then, and then talk to somebody, and, you know, they're really real receptive of what I have to say, even though, you know, I was just asking them to ask their customers not to park in my parking lot next door, and mine across the street, of which I own, so that I can have parking for my people. And that's the big problem, Kai, as you said, this area has no parking, he's in a suite right on the front of the street, uh, I don't know how many stalls, you maybe got two stalls, and six other businesses that are all high foot traffic places. So, my question is, you know, you're gonna close their parking lot for two days, is that fair to them? I don't know, I mean, I would be upset if I was any of these other businesses, but I don't know what your arrangement is. But my concern is the imposition it puts any of the other businesses in the area, because all the parking that they need is all the street parking that other people, you know, would like to have the opportunity to use in front of their place as well. I mean, uh, to put it bluntly, they don't have the resources to do things of this scope. I mean, it's supposed to be a tasting bar, supposed to be a place where you go to taste your craft beer. Now it's turning into a, you know, a, a thing we're gonna do, a, um, an industry party? Well, where are all these people gonna pa- park? And you can say whatever you want, I lived in Kailua for sixty years, I know the place better than anybody else, and you can say that all these people are gonna come on their bicycles and everything else, but the truth is, yeah, you got quite a few people, but they got bicycle lanes in Kailua, and you hardly have to see anybody right now. Truth is that, you know, I feel like it's an imposition for everybody, all the businesses in the area, when you do something of this sort, because now it takes away any of the resources for anybody else. That's what I have to say.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the, uh, Mr. Corvello?
Sorry, you said you own, or you're in a adjacent business, which one is your business? Are you in the same lot as them, this one?
I'm not right, lot right next door to them.
Mr. Corvello, what type of business do you have, what type of traffic do you have?
Uh, all of, the businesses in that building, and it's our, my family owns the building, it's, it's, uh, mostly automotive related in that building. I also own Bob's Sports Bar across the street as well.
Very familiar. And, um, Mr. Humshow, do you have the landlord or the owner's permission for this extension and, for the use of the parking lot area?
Uh, we do, we've talked to all the tenants within the building as a contingency of the landlord to get permission, and talked with them about their parking, and obviously we don't wanna interrupt their business, um, so that's why our event is, prior, in prior years, we did an event that was more of like an all day, so this year, we decided to make it, uh, later in the evening, starting at five, when we're gonna block off the lot, and based on that agreement with the other tenants within our suite, they've all agreed to that, and many of them will be attending.
But, um, two things, uh, we would like to see a written, something written from the landowner, giving you permission to use this area.
Uh, it should've been submitted, the initial report of the landlord's authorization form.
Do we have it?
Um, it would've been on my initial application, but I'm happy to resubmit it.
Okay.
We do have that approval.
Um, and then, secondly, your request is for ten AM start time, if you're saying that you folks are not planning to, um, fence things off until five, why is your request starting at ten AM?
In our parking spots, we'll be, it's like, uh, putting up the, the temporary porta-potties, as well as moving product out there, um, just to have everything staged and ready, so when we can close off the event, we'll be prepared, and I just wanted to take an extra security precaution, I didn't know if having product out there would be a requirement to have it out there, so that is the main reason why.
So that's just for staging time, is what you're representing?
Uh, correct, we're not gonna actually be, as an agreement with our neighbors there, we're not gonna really be actually establishing and firming up the fences until right around five.
Do you have assigned parking for?
We do have assigned parking.
How much stalls do you?
We have three stalls for us, and then there are, there are two vacant, um, units within our building, and those are allowed to be used by any of the tenants, and that totals another six spots roughly. Um, but those will be spots that are within this, um, zoned area, so after five PM, those won't be parked in as well.
Do you know how much total parking spaces you're gonna be taking, or what that?
Um, I don't know the exact number of total spaces, um, the estimated number of total spaces within the, this zone is roughly, maybe twelve, I would estimate.
Motion to convene into executive session.
I'm sorry, before we go, we have a question, and I, I'm hoping I don't mistake you, Mr. Corvello?
Corvello, yes.
Corvello, um, are you aware of any alternative parking in the general area, other than the public area where Whole Foods is, that might accommodate some of the?
Well, I don't know if it's allowed, but I, I, I know that you have Safeway right there, but I'm not, they're not really happy about, you know, anybody parking there.
And then there's the parking by, um, down to Earth, behind Down to Earth, and.
Down to Earth, that's part, yeah, that's, that's.
And the bowling alley.
Yeah.
Polly Lane.
Yeah.
And Foodland, Foodland parking lot. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, motion to convene.
Our motion to convene into executive session.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, we are now back on the, uh, on the record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or a type of action?
Yes, Chair, um, my motion is to approve request number one nine dash one seven zero two four with the following, um, conditions. Thank you, thank you. Um, one is that the, um, the request is approved for the dates that you requested, which will be Friday, August thirtieth, and September first. Oh, I'm sorry, Friday, August thirtieth, um, and Septem- and Saturday, Septem-
August thirtieth.
I'm picking up here, I'm sorry, you can't, I'm sorry, let me, let me retract that, so.
Chocolate, empty.
I'm sorry, okay, so your, your request is approved for the following dates, which is Friday, August thirtieth, and Saturday, August thirty first. In the event, um, and it will be approved for the hours of, um, three o'clock to ten o'clock PM, liquor service to start at five PM, no, earlier than five PM. Three is, in the event that you need to use the two additional days, and the alternate dates are, um, you need to notify Liquor Commission no later than twenty-four hours in writing via email at liquor@honolulu.gov.
I second the motion.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, uh, request number one nine, agenda item number fifteen, request number one nine dash one seven zero two four is approved. Understand one thing, you're only going to have two days.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Do you understand that for the record?
Yep, and I agree with all the contingencies.
If something should happen, hopefully we don't get anything, but if it does, then the alternate days come in.
Understood.
Okay?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to agenda item number sixteen, uh, requ- uh, request number two zero dash two zero one one nine from Key Ventures LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioner, Members of the Commission, Bert Kawasaki, uh, representing, uh, on behalf of, uh, Keyi Ventures. I don't have any changes to the investigative report, but, um, I just wanted to add a little bit of info, and we actually started in a count with, uh, Event Medics Hawaii, so any of our larger concert events now, uh, will always have two medics present.
Oh, very good. Commissioner?
I have a question.
Yes?
With the extension of premise, is it your goal to, to not serve any liquor inside?
Uh, it's a separate, uh, event altogether, so the entertainment for this event is actually in space four four nine. So it's actually the, the entertainment and people, uh.
Okay.
Are in four four nine, and we're just kinda extending our.
Or your, okay.
Area to create a beer garden, to service those clients over twenty-one.
So, only gonna, so, uh, all only gonna be in.
Only in the beer garden.
Your space in the artistry, or, and the beer garden, or just in the beer garden?
No, so artistry itself would be just by itself, kind of, uh, and the beer garden is only for the people attending four four nine.
Okay.
So, beverages wouldn't travel from artistry all the way to the beer garden.
Okay.
And, and vice versa, it's like a.
Correct, and vice versa, correct.
And for the record, we've seen this type of request before, any incidents?
No incidents.
Very good.
And then, um, liquor service's, uh, last call is made at one AM, um, stopped by one fifteen, so gives us plenty enough time to clear everybody out.
How many people you folks expect?
Um, this one, again, it's so hard to get that, you know, number, but I, I've been told that it's not as big a draw, so, uh, the previous event, we got close to the eight hundred that we had put down, um, currently, right now, we're at about ninety tickets sold, so I don't know if we'll get to the five hundred, yeah.
Okay.
But five hundred would really kinda be an amazing turnout, I think it will be below that.
Okay.
Yes, good.
Okay, very good.
Motion to approve request number two zero dash two zero one one nine.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, request number two zero dash two zero one one nine is approved.
Anything to call something?
Good luck, and always remember, amazing things do happen. Today's payday, people got extra money. Calling agenda item number seventeen, request number two zero dash two zero one five two, um, from Ellie's Playground.
Uh, Commission need not take action on this matter, the licensee was able to, um, complete its renewal and place a license in safekeeping, no commission action.
Thank you very much, let's go to agenda item number eighteen. Thank you very much. Let's go to agenda item number eighteen. Uh, request number two zero dash two zero one eight zero from Young's Market Company LLC. How are you, Mr. Chu?
Very good, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman O'Donnell, members of the Commission, Newton Chu, on behalf of the licensee, Young's Market Company. Just to let you know, this is part of a, uh, multi-state transaction. Young's Market Company was founded nineteen, I mean, eighteen eighty-eight, and, uh, was one of your first dispensers. It is joint forces with a, uh, a, a larger distributor called Republic National Distributing Company, uh, which operates in, uh, twenty-two states, plus the District of Columbia. Uh, Young's Market operates in ten states, so together, they will operate in thirty-two states. Uh, the transaction was confidential until yesterday, it closed, and we're here today to notify you of that change. One of the transactions involved converting the current licensee from a member-managed LLC to a manager-managed LLC, and it's a Delaware LLC, so, uh, no, there's no filing. It's an internal adjustment, and I submitted documents to that effect. Uh, we have submitted the personal histories for three new individuals, and those are being processed by the staff. And, uh, one individual from Young's will be stepping off, uh, the agency, and that's, that's the transaction.
That's the bottom line, very good. Okay, Commissioner Miyashiro, do you have any questions for the other panel?
Is this purely a notification issue? Are you requesting something specifically?
Well, um, you know, it's not clear from your, uh, regs whether, um, a change from a member-managed LLC to manager-managed LLC needs anything, 'cause the entity is the same. And under Delaware law, where the LLC is formed, there is no, it's not considered a change in entity. It's not a conversion, it's a same entity. So just that, in abundance of caution, I put that in there for you. But I do have to notify you, actually, within thirty days of needing members or managers, and we've done so.
Mm-hmm, very good.
We just acknowledge that.
It's all Greek to me.
Well, you can approve every class, I mean.
Oh, I wasn't, I was not aware that Young's Market had mainland branches.
Yeah, it sounds like a local company, but eighteen eighty-eight, uh, I, I read the history, I can't remember it all. It's, uh, it started out as a, just a, a market, uh, out in the west.
Good law, law.
But it's your fir-, I think it's your first licensed distributor, it's, it's, which was, uh, number one, so. Right? So predates all of us.
So, motion to approve request number two zero dash two zero one eight zero.
Second.
Then moved in, uh, second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I. I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, request number two zero dash two zero one eight zero from Young's Market Company is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Let's move on to agenda item number nineteen, request number two zero dash two zero zero three zero from James Lee Esquire. Mr. Lee?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm back again. Either way, I'm gonna need your barber's number later.
Very good.
Uh, last time I was here, uh, the, uh, authorization to represent SFK was missing, so I provided that with the, uh, commission. Miss Hirai should have, uh, covered that. Anyway, I'm here to say the same thing again, the termination of the license being held by, uh, Mr. Thai, and also waiver of the rule, uh, three dash eight two thirty point, thirty-two point one. In that, uh, I understand that, I was just given this letter from, uh, Ms. Hirai, informing me that the, uh, the licensee has requested another continuance, an extension, to comply. And I noticed that, yeah, even if he was given an extra time to comply, I mean, tax clearance, and also, you know, res- resolution of the ongoing lawsuit, it's not gonna resolve the matter in that he's not, he's, he's without a lease, and he had been, uh, evicted from, by the previous landlord. So ongoing feud between the previous landlord and previous tenant shouldn't have anything to do with our client. So we, we ask that the, uh, the, the current licensee's license be terminated, and the waiver of the rule be granted. That's what we are seeking today.
I think what we would like to ask, uh, Commissioners, uh, can I have a motion to go into executive session to speak with legal counsel?
So, move. Second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, we're now in executive session. Mr.? Mr. Chairman, may I make a few comments? Uh, let me, let me get us back on the record, Mr. Lee, and, um, uh, I will entertain you, uh. So, uh, thank you very much. We're now, now back on the, uh, on the official minutes. Uh, Mr. Lee, we'd like to, uh, clarify or make a statement, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Yes, thank you. Uh, first of all, I feel like the, uh, the current licensee
had been given ample time to do what needed to be done and comply, either take it to a new location, whatever. Hasn't done much in the way of, uh, uh, complying with the, whatever needs to be done. Number two, uh, at this point, our clients, they're stuck. I mean, they're not, they're, they somehow became a part of this ongoing feud between the previous tenant, previous landlord, and we cannot even apply for new license, because two licenses cannot be issued to the same location. So, uh, basically, innocent third parties are being held hostage, I feel like. So, you know, I, I understand that the Commission sometimes has to make a, you know, balance the competing interests. Uh, I, I feel like, on the one side, we have the feud, ongoing feud between previous tenant, previous landlord, and the innocent third party is on the other side, so, uh, that's, that's the situation now. And you can't even apply for the new license until you make some sort of a decision, so that's what I think so.
Mr. Lee, we understand your position very clearly.
Yes, thank you.
Um, our position is that, number one, uh, we ha- have asked before, and we're asking again,
Yes.
that we would like to see a notice of eviction issued to the Wands or Home Barn, 'cause you keep representing that they no longer have a lease. We don't have any evidence that they no longer have a lease, so we would like, stop.
I, I submitted a.
We would like to see a notice of eviction or a termination of a lease. If you gave us paperwork saying that you represent the landlord, so those documents should be easy for you to provide.
It was done by the previous landlord. Before my, my client, SFK, took over, he's a new landlord now, had nothing to do with the, uh, uh, Mr. Thai, the previous home bar-
So then the new landlord can issue a document, or come and appear before us and say, "This tenant does, no longer has a lease at this location."
Okay.
But we need something in writing, or the landlord themselves to come in and tell us that. We cannot just take hearsay to take your word for it that they no longer have a lease, number one. Number two, we do have to give, we don't want there to be a situation where there are two licenses assigned to the same premises. That's why we're going through this, to make sure that this license is no longer at this premises. Okay? They have not put this license in safekeeping. You're asking us to terminate another person's license, that they are not here to represent themselves.
Well, they were given ample time.
So they have put in a request, so, which we will be hearing next week.
Okay.
That being said, my mo- I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Lee, um, I understand you have a copy of the letter submitted by Home Barn Grill, it's dated, not dated. But it was submitted to the Commission on July ten. Do you have a copy of that?
No, I gotta copy this from, uh, Ms. Hirai.
That's the one.
Because it references an ongoing lawsuit. Do you have any information to shed light on that lawsuit?
No, I don't, with the previous landlord.
Okay, but you're not involved as a counsel for any of the parties to whatever lawsuits alluded to here? Thank you, sorry.
And the last time I was here, the only thing that I was, that was asked of me was to bring the authorization from the landlord that I represent him, which I did.
We also wanted to see that this, that eviction was actually affected, okay? Right now, we don't know, because this license is still assigned to this premises. Okay, so we don't want to allow you at this prem-, or your client at this premises as well, without knowing for sure that these guys have been cleared out, okay? And we also want to hear this all together, 'cause right now, you're saying this happened over here, and this, and there's a lot of hearsay going on. So these, they're gonna be agen- on the agenda next week, so then we can hear the full story from everybody, okay? So my mo-, I'm sorry, my motion is to continue request number two zero dash two zero zero three zero for one week.
Okay, so, mm, on, on our next hearing, we should be able to resolve this one for all day.
We hope so, Mr. Lee.
You will hopefully be able to resolve it. We are not going to resolve-
Talking about innocent parties, we're the innocent party here.
I, I understand.
We are not going to resolve anything. We are only gonna take action on what comes in front of us. Okay, let's see, uh, we have a motion?
Second.
Then moved in second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item ni-, uh, nineteen is continued for one week.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ooh, plenty chops, ooh, yeah. Go, agenda item, uh, number twenty, uh, this is, um, KTY eight eight one six LOC, DVA Style Law Hair Studio, this is, hi, how are you?
Hi.
This is a, um, three-month review of operations.
Yes, I'm Shurri Pakinag, P-A-J-I-N-G-A, Style Law Hair Studio.
Can we hear from, um, enforcement, please?
Catherine Fontaine, supervising investigator. Nothing to report, no violations, no complaints.
Very good.
Great.
Okay, now can we hear from you, ma'am, and tell us how everything is going, uh, with your new venture?
Things are pretty slow so far, but, um, as clients come in, they're seeing that we are offering beverages now, so, um, hopefully, things will kind of pick up a little bit more. And we did file our, um, our PE on Monday. Great.
Okay, very good. And there's no action required here?
No action required.
Okay, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it, and good luck. Okay? Now let's move on to, uh, agenda item number forty-one? Yes, can I have a type of action on agenda items twenty-one through thirty?
Vice Chair, motion, uh, for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items twenty-one to thirty inclusive.
Moved in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision and order, agenda items number twenty-one through thirty inclusive are approved. Moving into adjudication. Good afternoon, Ms. Neely.
Good afternoon, uh, Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel, on the record for prosecution of her to the usage of, um, adjudication matters.
Very good. Calling agenda item number thirty-one, BMA Market LLC.
Uh, this licensee has signed a written stipulation to plead no contest and, uh, waiver of appearance.
Uh, motion to, uh, accept the no contest plea and the waiver of appearance.
Second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-one, the no contest plea and the, uh, waiver of appearance are, are approved.
Um, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars, this is for failure to fire, file, um, inaccurate GLS report. It's a first-time violation.
And have they since filed an accurate report?
Um.
This is for last year.
This is for last year. That, I'm not sure, uh.
Do we have anybody available from?
Uh, Kiko said she's going to be here, I'm not sure she's still here.
Let's see.
No, she's not here. Okay, sorry.
It'll come back again.
Yeah.
It'll come back again if there's another violation.
Okay. A motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-two, High Steakhouse.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Mark Nezu, manager at T Brothers International, eighth DVA High Steakhouse.
Honored during the fiscal year ending in, ending June thirty, twenty eighteen, and the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales, or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of Rule three eighty-one seventeen point fifty-six of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
How would you like to please? Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Move in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-two, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Uh, this is the first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Sure, any comment?
Uh, no, just accounting error on our, uh, previous accounting.
And I assume that, uh, accurate report was submitted.
Yes, additional assessment has been, uh.
Thank you. Uh, mo- motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-two, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. And the former vice chair of this commission is looking down and very disappointed. Under her watch, this would have never happened. That is correct.
Thank you.
I hope we do not see you next year. Thank you. Agenda item number thirty-three, uh, thirty-three, Club Wave, Mr. Keo Chi.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Keuchu for the license.
Chair, I'm gonna recuse, to accomplish.
Very good, thank you. So noted for the record.
Waive reading of the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is a second violation, um, for, uh, submission of the annual employee list. Um, the previous one was in March, on March thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Um, as such, I recommend a fine of three hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Keo Chi?
What happened was the, um, the annual report was mailed to the residence address of the previous owner. So the present owner went down to the Commission, got that changed, the report got filed, the address got changed.
Okay, let's, let's try not to repeat this, yeah?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars, second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three, the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty, can we have?
No, no, I, thirty-four is mine, too.
Thirty-four is yours, too? Thank you, Mr. Keuchu.
Uh, no, sorry.
Nope, oh, not so fast. Not so fast, Kawasaki.
Uh, well, note for the record that, uh, Commissioner Miyashiro has recused himself for agenda item thirty-four.
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Commissioner Gannabon, also.
You may not have to, I'm gonna ask you to be completely.
Oh, okay. I still gotta recuse.
That is safe, then, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Mojo's Sports Bar and Grill.
Yeah, Keith Keuchu for the licensee. We had submitted a, um, a written plea, which Ms. Neely didn't get. So since I've got two Commissioners that recuse themselves, we might as well waive reading the charge and air plea of no contest and get this done.
All right, we're just waiting to receive it, so continue for one week.
No, we'll, we'll, go ahead, we'll go ahead.
We'll go ahead, yeah, he, he's gonna, he's gonna.
Kill liquor representation.
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
He's a very smart man.
Get, get rid of it.
Because we might not have five Commissioners here.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you. Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second. Moved in second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recom- recommendation?
This is the first violation, I recommend a fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Keo Chi?
So what happened here is the, uh, the mailing didn't go to the premises, but it goes to a mailbox. The present owner didn't have the mailbox key, that has also been since corrected, and it has since been filed, so.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-four, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you very much.
Your problem, Mr. Keo Chi?
Thank you.
Can we have, uh, Vice Chair Gannabon and Commissioner Mia Shero back on the, uh...
Oh, thank you.
Okay, let's call, uh, agenda item number thirty-five, World of Aloha.
Yes, may the record flag Wayne Lucas counsel, Linda Wong was present, but they had to leave. And I, I have a period on their behalf, all right?
Okay.
And so, I am looking to dismiss this charge because, um, this is a, uh, violation of annual, submitting the annual employee list. But it, it, it appears that we did send the reminder letters to, um, the wrong address in spite of, um, licensee's requests, multiple requests that we sent it to a certain address, so in light of that, um, I'm going to dismiss.
Motion to, uh, dismiss, agenda item...
Uh, motion to dismiss agenda item thirty-five? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, thirty-five, the charges are dismissed.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Aloha. Agenda item...
Thank you.
Thank you, aloha, this is agenda item number thirty-six, Silk Lady Lounge.
Um, uh, licensee, um, is represented by James Lee, who only recently received a discovery and has requested a couple of weeks to, um, to discuss specifics with his client. I have no objection. Uh, so, he requested to continue, continue to August fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Motion to continue, agenda item thirty-six, Silk Lady Lounge to August fifteenth? Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-six is continued to August fifteenth, two thousand, and... What do you... Calling agenda item number thirty-seven, Non-Stop Liquor Store.
May the record flag Wayne Lucas counsel for licensee, to my right is Terry Wong, manager. We waive reading of the charges and enter a plea of no, no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-seven, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
Uh, this is actually a fourth violation of, for adjudication purposes. Um, I understand the licensee is currently on a temp license, so... In any case, well, I recommend a fine of two thousand dollars.
For the record, the last time we were here, this is Terry Wong.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he had, he was, he had advised the commission that he had, he was in the process of selling the premises, and that the premises now on a temporary license. But, uh, the only thing we can add to is that, you know, he has given up the license that he will promise you that he'll never be involved in the liquor business again.
So, wait a minute, it's on a temporary license under a different licensee?
A different entity, yes.
So, this violation is for that, that licensee's?
No, the principal license.
Okay.
Non, non-sport liquor.
Ah, okay, and this was in two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah, it hasn't been transferred yet.
Four violations, uh, for sale to a minor is very serious, so when were these, when were these violations?
The previous three, uh, there was one in twenty fourteen, one in twenty fifteen, and the most recent, besides the one at issue, was, uh, February twenty eighteen.
So, there were two in the same year?
Uh, no, twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen.
No, twenty, so this one is October fourth, twenty eighteen, and then the other one was in February twenty eighteen?
Correct.
Aye, 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 so, um, Mr. Luke, do you also represent the temporary licensee?
Yes, I do.
You do, okay, so, were they operating it at the time?
No.
He's operating it at the time?
Yes, he was operating it at the time.
Okay. We really don't like seeing these. This is public safety. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-seven, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-eight, The Crawfish and Crab Shack.
May the record flag Wayne Lucas counsel, uh, do we have a one-week continuance? They have another, uh, hearing next week, we wanna put, uh, both together.
Was Mr. Sannabon not sitting in the audience over there?
They had to leave.
Ms. Neely.
But they do have a hearing.
Any objections, Ms. Neely?
Um, well, I, I don't object just based on Mr. Luke only being retained as counsel today, so he wants to...
Yeah, but they have another hearing, another violation next week, yeah.
You, you are representing them?
Yes.
Okay.
Objections from the prosecutor, then?
Motion to continue, agenda item thirty-eight for one week, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight is continued for one week.
Calling agenda item number thirty-nine, King's Family Mart.
To, to my right is Chung R. Lee, she was a cashier involved in the, the allegations. Um, may the record flag Wayne Lucas counsel, we waive reading of the charges and tear plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, this is a second violation for sale of liquor to minor, um, for adjudication purposes. The previous sale to minor was on, uh, April twenty-first, twenty eighteen. As such, I recommend a fine of two thousand dollars.
I love the previous.
Uh, April twenty-first, twenty eighteen?
I don't, I didn't see it, no.
You didn't see another?
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mr. Luke, this is two violations in as many years, so, what happened?
She made the mistake, the mistake to a coworker.
Okay, look at... How did you make this mistake?
A coworker to, look.
Okay, um, the customer said he didn't bring his I D. And then, uh, the, one of the worker, she told me that she knows him and he's overaged. So, you know, after that, it's...
That's not acceptable.
Exactly, so, after that, I don't care what were, I am checking their I Ds and I making sure that, you know, I, I don't take any words from any of the, like, because, uh, she lives in their areas, that's what the information she gave me. But I know it's, it's my mistake and it's, this is not acceptable, and I'm not taking any words from nobody but, you know, Fisher.
Yeah, and have you, how long have you been a cashier?
I've been there, um...
Three years.
Yeah, three, over three years right now.
Okay, so, you were working at, when there was a previous violation in, uh, last year?
At that time, I wasn't working, I was on a, uh, vacation, so, uh, somebody else was, like, in, working over there, so...
So, in the future, you folks are going to be checking every I D?
Yes, we do.
To make sure that they're twenty-one or over?
Yes, we, we making sure, and, I mean, we check everybody, I don't care if they're looking over sixty or, you know, we check their I D, I just making sure.
Since this violation occurred?
Yes, yes, since this one, you know, I, I making sure that everybody, I, I tell them to check everybody's I D. I don't care how, how, you know, old they look, and, you know, if they're like, uh, continuous customers, and we know for sure, then, you know, we say, you know, okay, but still, you know, once in a while, just to check everybody. Making sure, you know, if they look under fifty, I tell them to check, I, I don't care.
Are you, are you the owner?
Uh, my husband is the owner.
How long?
So, he just did, uh, he just took over.
When did he just take over?
He just took over, uh, that is, in May?
And you're an employee of the establishment?
Yes.
What is your position there?
Uh, I'm the manager now.
So, you should know even better.
Yes, I got my license and I, 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 I making sure that, you know, everybody check, no matter what, you know, that's, that's the lesson that I learned.
Yes, Mr. Luke, what would you like to say?
I just want to comment, in this particular case, this is, uh, and, uh, the minor was over six feet and two hundred eighty pounds. Yeah, it's just a factor.
The only Venisi.
Smoker. That's a big...
Well, shouldn't matter, shouldn't matter.
Exactly, that's why I know people...
No, no identification card, no liquor.
Exactly, yes.
Exactly.
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
All right, we hope not to see you folks back again for this type of violation or any.
No.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars? Second.
It's removed in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, excuse me, agenda item number thirty-nine, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved. Mr. Luke, my nephew is six feet four, three hundred pounds, he's sixteen years old.
Same.
Honest.
Yeah.
Moving on to agenda item number twenty-one.
Forty.
Oh, forty, yes. Oh, twenty-one, Mart. That's getting late. Calling twenty-one, Mart, I'm sorry. Mr. Luke, please.
To my right is Ming, huh, Ming Han, what is her?
Shu.
Shu, spelled X U E, spelling has been invited. She is the manager for the premises, may the record flag Wayne Lucas counsel, waive reading of the charges and tear plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
This is a second violation for adjudication purposes, uh, the last violation occurred on February twelfth, twenty nineteen. I recommend a fine of two thousand dollars.
Yes, Kalu.
Swain?
Uh, yeah, so, the first violation was...
Could you speak up, please? Speak into the microphone?
Yeah, um, so, what happened was, um, my husband, actually, um, he checked the I D, but he paid attention to the years already, but he just missed the date. So, um, the liquor commission office is that, uh, he, he sold the liquor to the under minor, and then, um, the date was, uh, I think it July something.
So, was this part of our compliance check?
Correct.
It was.
Um, and so, we do this on purpose, send people that are twenty years old, just under twenty-one, to see if you folks are checking the, the dates, to s- make sure that their birthday has occurred already. So, we need you folks to pay better attention. Two violations in the same year is really not acceptable. Okay? And this is on School Street, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, lots of minors coming in that area, once they hear that you folks don't check very well, guess what? That's, now, they all want to come and see if they can get liquor from you. Okay, so, having that type of reputation is not okay, because it's a safety issue. So, um, do you folks have anything at your register?
Yeah, we do.
That can tell you the date?
Yes.
Not, not just the year?
Yeah, we do.
But the day?
Yes, we do.
You do now?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
You said your husband is the person who sold the alcohol?
Yes.
What is his position at this establishment?
On the cashier.
Oh, who owns the place?
My mom.
So, family business?
Yes.
How long have you, how long has your family owned this?
Two years.
Two years. You understand we...
Yes.
You know we can suspend or revoke the license, right?
Yeah, I understand.
So, two thousand dollars is the most that we are able to find you. If we want, if we want to do more than that, then we can suspend or we can revoke your license, which means you won't be able to sell alcohol. And I'm sure that that would be a big financial burden for you folks. So, please relate to your family to take these, take it very seriously, no sale to minors. Motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling, uh, agenda item number forty-one, Kamalalu Market.
Evening Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Liquor Commission. Uh, my name is Adam Shin, to my right is John Shin, he is the owner of Kamalalu Market. Um, at this time, we would like to enter a fee of no contest.
Waive reading of the charges?
Yes.
Motion to accept the no contest plea? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-one, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
Uh, this is a second violation for sale of liquor to minor, um, again, as a result of, uh, um, alcohol compliance enforcement check. Uh, the previous violation was in February tw- twenty nineteen, um, as such, I recommend a fine of two thousand dollars.
Mr. Shin and Mr. Shin, what happened?
Um, so, we have two cashiers with us, um, the first one, I, we saw you guys a few weeks ago, and, um, the second one, she's been with us for around fifteen years. Um, our C C T V, it shows that she checked I D, um, she gave it back, but she checked it again, so, she was certain. But I guess, you know, I guess her eyes just weren't that great that day. We do have, um, a digital, what is that to say, what day they're supposed to be born. Um, as of then, um, I recently just quit my job to actually go and work full-time to kind of just, I guess, manage things a little bit better. Maybe a first set of eyes, uh, maybe some youth, so, we're doing our best to make sure this never happens again.
Thank you for that representation. How long has Kamalalu Market been in business?
Uh, my father has been the owner for about twenty-five years.
That's what I thought?
Yes.
Been there a long time, yeah?
Yes.
Um, we, we don't want to have, be forced to suspend or revoke your license, but two of these violations in the same year is very serious, especially for that area?
We understand.
Which I'm very familiar with.
Yes.
And like I told the previous licensee, once the word gets out that you guys don't check very well and that you can buy alcohol if you're not twenty-one, now, they all wanna come to your store and it makes your job a lot harder.
We understand.
So, if you can put a good message out there that we don't allow it, it'll help you folks to have a smoother business operation.
We understand.
We don't wanna see you back for this type of violation.
Maybe outside.
Might see me at Kamalalu Market.
Best pals, you'd be?
It is the best, I know, that's why I'm sad to see you here for this.
Very sorry about this.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-one, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Calling agenda item number forty-two, M K Market.
My name is Takuro Iino, I'm the new owner of M K Market, no contest.
Do you waive reading of the charges? Why don't you read the charges, please?
Honor about May twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, in City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Swastika Maharajan, at the licensed premises in violation of Section two eighty-one seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii Revised Statutes.
And sir, you would like to plead no contest?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea? Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
Uh, this is a second violation for sale of liquor to minor, um, this was part of the in, compliance enforcement checks. Um, the previous violation was in February twenty nineteen, I recommend a fine of two thousand dollars.
Sir, you said you're the new owner?
Yes.
How long have you?
I took over March.
You took over in March?
Yeah.
Okay, so, this violation occurred before you took over?
Uh, no, no, actually, after I took, I took over.
February, so, this occurred in February?
Oh, no, I'm talking about May.
The previous one?
No, no, not mine.
All right, so, um, you've heard what I said to the other licensees for this same violation? Okay, um, so, what happened?
Yeah, my workers there, uh, he checked the I D, uh, somehow, he miscalculated age, you know, he thought twenty-one, but which were twenties, you know? Yeah, my workers there, uh, he checked the ID, but somehow he miscalculated age, you know, he thought twenty-one, but which were twenties, you know. Uh, we really approached it.
So what have you done to make sure that, that this doesn't happen again?
Yes.
What are you doing?
Oh, after that, you know, yeah, we check, you know, all things. We, uh, study how to calculate the age, you know. I, I mean, we wrote down the, you know, what the age, we can sell, what the year, what they are born, you know.
And with the date and month?
Yes.
Okay, um, I will repeat what I said to previous licensees. We can suspend or revoke your license, which I think that for this type of establishment would be a big financial burden for you, if you were not allowed to sell liquor anymore. Any other questions, Commissioners? Motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-two, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Let's call agenda item number forty-three, Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairs and Commissioners. I am Matt Spector. Last name is spelled S P E C T O R, and I'm here representing Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill. I would like to waive the reading, and I would like to request to continue it for August fifteenth.
Ms. Neely.
Um, my understanding is that you, uh, wait, August fifteenth, is, do you still intend to deny the charge?
Yes.
So you can, well, okay. Um, I have no objection to continuing to August fifteenth.
Pardon?
I have no objection to continuing to August fifteenth.
August fifteenth?
Okay.
What's the purpose for the request?
I'm currently without my counsel, and a couple weeks would give us time to get our, um, witnesses in order. Okay, thank you.
Motion to continue agenda item forty-three to August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-three is continued to August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. So just before I call an exad... So you're gonna contest this charge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Calling agenda item number forty-four, uh, Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill.
Uh, Matt Spector for Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill. Waive the reading of the charges and like to request to continue it to the same date of August fifteenth.
I have no objection to continuing to August fifteenth.
Thank you. Uh, motion to continue agenda item forty-four to August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-four is continued to August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Spector.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, calling agenda item number forty-five, administrative matters. Will I have none?
Thank you.